All right, good evening. Calling the Norfolk School Committee to order. Today is Tuesday, October 21st, 2025. I'll start today's meeting as we always do by reading the mission statement. The Norfolk Club of Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Our roll call, please.
Peter Schwalke.
Lauren Vivas.
Grace Lockett.
Lisa Sheldon.
Ingrid Alerny.
First item on the agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak tonight? No? Next is correspondence, which there is none. So, moving on to the school committee chair. The first item on the list tonight is a list of gifts for approval. Listed on here, there are four of them. The first one is from the Norfolk PTO of $800 to go to the chorus stipend. The next one, also from the PTO, $3,000 going towards Camp Burgess. The next one, also from the PTO, in the amount of $1,039.20 to go towards the box at the Active Kids Morning Session 2. And the next gift is from the Friends of CPAC for $1,000, and that is going toward the Unified Champion School Field Day. So, I am looking for a motion to approve the gifts as listed.
Who moved?
Second.
Further discussion? Thank you.
Always a thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next on the list is the paraprofessional negotiations update. So, Midora and I are the school committee members on the negotiations team. We met about two weeks ago, and we collaboratively came up with ground rules for the discussion. The paraprofessionals presented some, mostly language, that they'd like us to consider. We didn't get into any financial components yet, but we're meeting tomorrow, where I believe they'll probably be presenting those, and we'll continue the process. So far, it's been good. Do you have anything to add, Ingrid?
No, I think that, as you said, we had a good first meeting. We collaborated and identified the ground rules. They shared some preliminary proposals that we will expect to have some responses to tomorrow, and, you know, we have a future meeting scheduled for November 5th and November 19th.
Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to listening sessions. I just wanted to update you on this. This came in in an email I received. So, if you remember back in March, we signed on to a resolution really encouraging the state to relook at Chapter 70 funding and how state aid comes to towns, because right now, towns like ours who rely very heavily on property tax and don't have a lot of commercial are struggling, and the Chapter 70 funds are not enough right now for what the schools need, and towns like us are really feeling it. So, the Healy administration announced a series of public hearings to really review the statewide formula, and they put out a press release on it and said that, you know, this is how we fund schools, but we're hearing the concerns. So, they are going to host a bunch of listening sessions, starting at the end of October 23rd in Boxford, October 30th in Worcester, November 6th in Greenfield. There's going to be a virtual one that anyone can register to attend on November 18th, and then one on November 19th in Lakeville. In addition to these public hearings, they also encourage people, individuals, committees, town officials, educators, anyone to write in if you have thoughts on the matter. And Ingrid and Alan Cameron, who's the superintendent of Rentham, sign up to speak at the virtual hearing. And just wanted to throw that out there to you all. We know we've gone through tough budget cycles. We've talked about our budget. We know this is so important for towns like ours. If anyone had any thoughts, do we want to write something? Should we write something jointly with the select board, because this really affects our whole town, not the school? Do we want to make a statement? Do we want to just say we are in support of Ingrid's testimony? So, so many options out there, so I just wanted to throw it out there to see if people had thoughts on how we can best help this effort.
That's a good idea, to put something together. The, correct me if I'm wrong, the thing that we utilized, you know, several months ago, can it just kind of be reworked easily to submit again and say, like, this is what we're kind of...
I think that these listening sessions are in response to the number of people that submitted that original comments on the Chapter 70 formula.
Yeah.
As Lisa said, Dr. Cameron and I have registered to provide testimony at the online forum on November 18th. I'm happy to share the comments and arguments that we'll be bringing forward at that with the committee, and if you want to attend, you can attend. If you want to, again, write a letter in support of the testimony, there's lots of options. We will have a November school committee meeting, but we are still working on that. I have a preliminary draft, but as Lisa said, some of the real challenges that we've had, our Proposition 2.5 is capped at 2.5%. So, when you have rising educational costs that are far exceeding that, that towns that don't have large commercial revenue are really facing significant budget shortfalls that are negatively impacting our ability to maintain class sizes, our ability to maintain quality educational programming, and it's not realistic that municipalities like Norfolk can bridge that gap. It needs to be a broader state reevaluation of school funding. So, happy to share those comments. Alan and I are meeting next Wednesday to fine-tune and finalize them. I can send them out to the committee and talk to people individually. Obviously, we have to be conscious of open meetings, so we can't discuss them, but I can share them with you and have individual conversations if people have questions or feedback, and then you can make a decision if you want to write something individually, or we could discuss at the November meeting if you want to submit something to the state as well.
I do think it might be powerful if, to see if the select board would be willing to co-sign something with us, because I do think that's, you know, it's not just the schools, it is the town, and it is all of our townspeople, whether we utilize the schools or not. So, I do think that could be, you know, an extra level of...
Yeah. Judge. It's been a long time. I agree, because it does, I mean, schools are a large part of the town operational budget, typically around 65% of all of Norfolk's budget goes to funded education. So, and the rest is, it police fires, so when we have a shortfall, it impacts all community members. So, I mean, the other thing is if, Lisa, as the chair, if you want to reach out to the chair of the select board and craft a joint message, then you could bring it to both boards to sign. You know what I mean? Like, that might be another avenue because of the time restrictions, but if they're interested, we could, and I can support that effort in crafting a joint statement that then both committees could consider signing on to.
Do you think that would be the best way? Because I know you're, you both are going to give the verbal testimony, and do you think that would complement it nicely, like a letter following up from both select boards, school committee?
I think so. I think, I mean, you could also speak if you wanted to speak that day. I just don't know how many people they're taking and how many people have signed up. Like, we signed up early because we really wanted to make sure that small suburban districts were represented. I know there's a lot of urban superintendents that are planning to speak, but the issues are very different. So, we wanted to make sure we got a spot in that, so we could talk about the issues that some of smaller suburban districts are facing. So, I don't know if there's still slots.
Right. No, I think the letter might just be better if you're taking care of the spoken part, and then we can complement it with a letter.
Sure.
I don't know if encouraging community members to write in too, just letting people know that this is an issue we're really trying to bring attention to as best we can, and that's my effort, so. Is everyone comfortable, maybe? We craft a letter and reach out to the select board, see if they want to... And the letter will probably just emphasize what you're saying, so maybe we send it after, and we can bring it to the next school committee.
I think it's great.
I think that's great.
All right. That is all I have.
All right. So, we'll move on to the next part of the agenda. So, I just have some school highlights, things that I wanted to share with the committee. There is a lot happening across the district, so I'll try to capture some of the key highlights fairly briefly, and then we have both of our school principals, as well as our technology team presenting tonight. So, some of these things you'll hear more about in the presentations to follow. First of all, I'm excited to report that we are almost fully staffed at this time. All of our open paraprofessional positions have been filled. We've recently onboarded a licensed practicing, an LPN, practicing nurses support, our two school nurses, to provide services for some students that we have, but we're really in good shape, and that's exciting, because last year, we went through most of the year with open para vacancies. So, this was nice to start the year in this position. We are implementing our new math program, and that has gone very well. I think prior to the opening of school, we did have a full day PD day with Amplify, who provided some training for our teachers and our support staff. It is a big transition. It is a different way of teaching math. There is, as you're learning any new program, there's material preparation and getting to become familiar with all the online tools and things. So, there is a learning curve, but I think overall, our teachers are excited about it, and students are excited about it. It really pushes kids to be active problem solvers, to talk about math, to think critically. It's been exciting to visit classrooms and see the work that students are doing, so stay tuned, but that is going very well. We also have Unit Aid Day coming up tomorrow, so you probably, just a reminder, kids are wearing orange. I have to look for orange clothing, but it is a great day that really focuses on community and kindness, and our students do paired lessons. So, students from 6th grade and the upper grades travel to the HOD. They're paired with students in a lower class, and they participate in a shared lesson and kindness community activity. So, we're looking forward to that tomorrow. You'll see pictures in the upcoming school newsletters. We also have, the Norfolk PTO, and we did talk about this last spring, has funded graciously the purchase of Museum of Science Technology Engineering Kits. We have our tech integration specialist, Robin Tussieri, here tonight, and they will be talking about, and she'll be sharing a video with you later, but we are rolling those out, and she has begun teaching the first unit to our 5th grade students, and the unit the 5th grade students are exploring looks at the effect of plastics on the marine environment and the ecosystem, and they engineer, they work on a design project to engineer filters to reduce plastic waste from entering the ocean. And next month, she'll be starting with our 1st graders. This will be new experience for our 1st graders, and they are working on a unit called Engineering Nightlights, and they have to design nightlights that will, with materials, and that would meet user preferences and communicate a message. So, she'll share more about that, but those are also exciting opportunities for kids, again, to be active problem solvers, think critically, and hone some of those design skills. We have great open houses at both of our school buildings. They were very well-attended. HLDA was able to host a Community Resource Fair at the same time as their open house, so we had lots of organizations and local groups, like the Cub Scouts, who had come and requested consideration for school partners, were able to share information with parents and the community members at the open house during the resource fair. So, that was a big hit. We have an upcoming Professional Development Day on November 4th. Last year, we partnered with King Philip, and we hosted a joint PD day where staff could participate in a wide range of workshops. We expanded that this year. We got really good feedback. People enjoyed having a chance to work with colleagues from other districts. This year, both Rentham and Plainville are participating, so we have a regional PD offering on the November 4th, and we have over 60 workshops that we'll be offering for staff. Many of our staff are hosting and presenting workshops that day, so we're really excited about that. A few things from the schools. At the HLDA, they've rolled out a new PBIS Positive Behavior Incentive Program. Last year, you know, kids were working on earning kindness coins. This year, it is What's the Buzz, Be Responsible, Be Respectful, and Be of the Month. Students can earn B stickers for showing responsible behavior, especially in unstructured places like recess and lunch. They also can be entered into a raffle to be recognized during a monthly draw. Over the summer, we also had our custodial team install new playground surfacing at the HLDA playground. We talked about that previously when our facilities director updated. It's really given a facelift to that playground and made it safer and more user-friendly, and in recognition for that, on National Custodians' Day, the HLDA teachers and staff recognized our custodians that were part of that project. Our preschool students made superhero capes for the custodians. Our 1st grade students made cards. Kindergarten classrooms made pictures, and Grade 2 wrote class poems, so they were celebrated. It was a really nice and touching day for everybody involved. Freeman has many things going on as well. You probably saw in the newsletter, if you have students at Freeman, that they are implementing a new peer leadership program, which aligns with our district strategic plan and our goal of providing more leadership opportunities for students. They're in the process of nominating students for 5th and 6th grade students to serve on that, as part of that peer leadership group. Students can either self-nominate, they can nominate a peer, and teachers can also nominate. They're developing that selection criteria, and once that council is formed, students are going to attend a full day of training for peer leadership at Bridgewater State that's sponsored by the Mark Center, which is the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center. So, that is exciting and a great opportunity for kids. Mark also did two assemblies for our students. They were held today. Grade 3 and 4 participated in a workshop on friendship and conflict, and Grade 5 and 6 on bullying and cyberbullying basics. So, we continue to work closely and partner with Mark. We also had the chance to host some student musicians from the King Philip Regional High School Band that came down to demonstrate instruments for students in grades 3 who may be interested in participating in beginner band. And then, the students here, as I said, HLDA has a new program, the Be What's the Buzz. Freeman is in their second year of the SOAR program, third year of the SOAR program, and they met, the students met their first goal, which was 10,000 feathers awarded for demonstrating those target behaviors, and as a reward for reaching the goal, they had Twin Day, where students could dress with a buddy, or teachers could dress as twins for the day. They had a lot of fun with that, and that just happened last week. And then, last thing, I just want to call out, we have a teacher at the Freeman Kennedy who led the Unified School, the Champion Schools Initiative last year, worked with the committee, and we, the FK was recognized for the high-quality programming they offered. Again, Unified Champion Schools has really replaced Special Olympics, and the goal is to make all of your athletic programs more accessible and inclusive, and to build those team-building opportunities throughout your school. FK hosted a Unified School Cornhole Tournament in the spring that the founders from Unified School and our representatives came to and were just wowed by what was happening. So, one of our teachers was asked to present at the regional, recent conference, and we had four other teachers from the district that attended that as well. So, in a nutshell, that's a snapshot of what's been going on, and as I said, you will hear more about each of those things as our principals and our tech team present tonight. So, happy to take any questions, or we can delve into the next presentation.
I will just say, my daughter gets off the bus every day telling me whether she got a B sticker or not. She's like, mommy, do you want the bad news or the good news? And I was like, the bad news? She's like, well, I lost it, but I got a B sticker.
Very nice.
Discuss every day.
All right, so I'm going to turn it to Trish Kelly, our technology director, and Robin Tussieri, our technology integration specialist, who are going to share an update on the technology committee's work, our technology team's work. Welcome.
Hi. It's nice to see you all again. The last time I was here was in June. I was updating you on the progress that was happening with the Tech Steering Committee, and when I wrapped that up that evening, I said I was hoping to come back in the fall to present to you some great things happening in, you know, the integration with technology in the classroom. So, I'm here tonight with my colleague, Robin Tussieri. Robin's been with the district for 20, 21 years. She was a 5th grade teacher, and I've had the good fortune of having her on my team for the last nine and a half years as the Technology Integration Specialist. She's doing the whole district right now, because we're down a Technology Integration Specialist. So, Robin is here tonight to present on what some of the students are doing in tech integration. About a year and a half ago, Robin was selected from a national pool of educators to attend this two-day immersive workshop. It was sponsored by Dell Computers, and it was hosted by the Museum of Science in Boston. This workshop focused on centering, integrating engineering and computer science into the classroom through that YES curriculum. The YES curriculum is Youth Engineering Solutions, and Ingrid hit on two points earlier tonight, and Robin is going to show you what the 3rd grade class did last year with this new focus. I want to also mention, before Robin presents to you, that as we discuss the positive uses of technology in education, we also recognize there is a national conversation about the overall impact of digital health in our youth. We strongly encourage all parents here, and maybe your neighbors don't send your children to this school, but bring your neighbors as well. So, it's for parents and guardians to attend, consider attending a special viewing of the movie Screenagers for the elementary school. This is going to be brought to you by King Philip. We partnered with King Philip, Healthy King Philip, and Dot Pearl, our wellness director, got us a grant to have this. And the film is a thoughtful, non-judgmental look at navigating the complexities of children's screen time, addressing the reality of young students being constantly saturated with the deluge of information, and the film aimed to support parents as they guide their children through the digital age. Movie is about 45 minutes, and at the end of the movie, we'll have a 30-minute discussion. We have a pediatrician, a psychologist, an SRO officer, and school administrators. We'll be doing a Q&amp;A when that's over, and that will be held on November 6th at 6:45 here at Freeman Kennedy in the cafeteria. It's for all parents and guardians in Norfolk, and if you have a sister-in-law or a friend in another town that wants to join and come in, we're more than welcome to have anybody and everyone. So, without further ado, I'd like to present Robin Tussieri.
Hello, everyone. Nice to be here. Thank you, Trish, for sharing a little bit about our program. I want to start by thanking the PTO. Ingrid mentioned how important they were in this whole process of bringing these units to us. As soon as I came back and started talking about them, Jen Wolf got right on it with the PTO, and she secured the funding for us to bring these to every grade, and we're rolling those out, as Ingrid mentioned. Thank you to Lisa for supporting me as I navigate the district, and Kristin also. We're actually piloting for the museum, a unit with 1st grade. We started just yesterday with Jenny Foster's class, and it's a unit on sound where the students will be designing drums. So, that's been, that'll be really fun, and thank you for that. And of course, Trish, for always supporting whatever we have on the docket, so thank you. I have some friends that wanted to be here, but they're probably getting ready for bed. So, I'm going to have, I'm going to show you some eager engineers here. Last year, the 3rd grade students, all 3rd grade students participated in the magnetic dog door unit, and to say that they soared, excelled, would be an understatement. To hear them speak about the work that they were doing, to use the vocabulary, was just unbelievable, and it was all inspired by the YES curriculum. So, here's a little bit about it. It's standards-aligned, it's meant to supplement, so it's not a replacement for our curriculum, but it's a wonderful supplement, and it takes them through the process, and as they go from grade to grade, the process is the same, the vocabulary is the same, it just changes a little bit in terms of the expectations for students. It's a little bit more about the standards alignment. And to ask, what are the steps that students are following? Whenever you hear about engineering, there's usually some sort of format that it's the same type of steps, there just may be different wording. So, my students here, our students are going to tell you.
Hi, I'm Emma.
I'm Finn.
We were in 3rd grade last year, which means we got to do an awesome magnetic dog door project. Our challenge was to design a special door for a dog shelter. The door had to be easy for a dog to open, but strong enough to keep out sneaky rats.
We used magnets to help us make it work. We use engineering design to help the dogs. That means we use six steps.
Hi, I'm Eliana, and the steps for the engineering design process are ask, imagine, plan, create, test, improve. And the next step, my clips and my friends, and I will tell you exactly what we did for each step.
Hi, I'm Natalie. The project we want to share with you is the magnetic dog doors. The ask part was figuring out the problem. The biggest rule was the door had to be easy for the dog to push open, but it also had to close really tight to keep any rats out. It was like solving two puzzles at once.
Hi, I'm Grayson. The next step was imagine. We brainstormed lots of ways the door could open and close. How could we make it easy for a big dog, but hard for something smaller to rat? We drew different ideas for the flaps and where to put the magnets to make the doors stay closed. Better on ideas, but we had to imagine with our partner on the final design.
Hi, I'm Charlie. After we brainstormed lots of ideas, the plan was when we picked the best one. We had to agree exactly where to put the magnets to keep the rats out. We needed the flap in the door frame to trap each other, so the door would snap closed. We also knew that we had to have the magnets repel, so the dog could open a door. Planning helped us measure and get ready to build.
Hi, I'm Grayson. Final was time to create. We made the door, we made the, we made the door frame and cut the flap. It was tricky to line up the magnets perfectly, because even if they were even a little off, bit off, the door wouldn't close right. We had to make the, we had to make sure the magnets on the flap and the frame were facing the right way until we trapped each other. We, we used what we learned from magnets to make the design just right. After we built our normal doors, we had to test them. We, we had to make sure the dogs could open and close the doors again and again.
We figured out we needed the magnets to repel. We attached the magnet on the dog's collar and a magnet with the same pull on the door
We also had to have, we also had to keep the rats out by keeping the door closed. That meant the magnet on the flap had to strongly attract the magnet on the door frame.
If the pull wasn't strong enough, a little rat could probably nudge it open, so we knew we needed a strong force of attraction. The last step was to improve. Once we saw what went wrong in the test, we fixed it. My team accidentally put two magnets in backwards, and then they would repel each other, pushing the door away from the frame.
We flipped one of them, so they would attract and pull the door shut to keep those rats out. We learned that being an engineer means always making your design better and fixing your Thank you for taking the time to learn about our project. Have a great day.
So, as you can see, the students explained it much better than I could. I want to thank Natalie, Grayson, Emma, Eliana, Grayson, Charlie, Finn, and also Mrs. McFadden, who's always willing to collaborate. All of the teachers have been so wonderful, especially with a new ELA curriculum, a new math curriculum, being willing to invite me in and collaborate with them. So, thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Oh, that was so fun.
So fun.
Thank you for sharing that.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you to both Robin and Trish, and I think, you know, we like to have our different department heads be able to come and share some of the things that are happening in their department. As you saw from Robin's presentation, these supplemental units extend our science curriculum and really give kids the opportunity to actively engage, problem-solve. They're also building skills around collaborating with other
They're also building skills around collaborating with other peers, evaluating and determining, you know, which design is going to be the best fit, testing and refining. So those are skills that apply across, across subjects. And it's, if you had a chance to see, I don't know if any of you had their graders last year, but the level of conversation as you walked around to the different groups and asked them about their design, they could all tell you, well, we tried this and it didn't work. And this, so we made this modification. But their content understanding of magnets and forces really was rich because they were actively engaged in, in building and constructing their own knowledge and understanding. So we are very grateful to Robin and to Trish and the other two members of the tech team who are not here tonight, who are our unsung heroes behind the scenes. Rafael Sardi and Mark Peasey do a tremendous job of supporting the technology across the district and all of our classrooms. As you know, much of our curriculum relies on technology. We have a large user environment and a very, very thin team. So thank you for all of your work and, and helping us to make sure our students are successful. So thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, next we have the Kristen Jafun, our new principal at the HLD Day School. As you know, under the mass legislature, all of our schools have a site-based school council. I mean, I'm sorry, they do have a site-based school council, but they have school councils that are comprised of community members and staff that are responsible for developing a school improvement plan. The school improvement plans that they have developed were presented to the school committee and voted on and approved. And they are here tonight to provide you with an update of where they are in terms of the progress towards the goals that were established. And so Kristin is up first.
Great, thank you. That's a really tough act to follow. But thank you for welcoming me here to present. I'm Kristen Jafun. I'm the principal over at the HLD Day School. And so as Ingrid kind of set me up, our agenda is to just review our school improvement plan that was developed back in 2023. We're ending it this year and to give you a little bit of our progress update on our goals and action steps. So we do have four focus areas or four goals in our strategic, I mean, in our school improvement plan. They are aligned with the district's strategic goals. Our first one is around social emotional learning. Second is environmental responsibility. That's our being green goal. Our curriculum implementation, that has an ELA focus, is our third goal. And our fourth is community partnerships and around communication. So I'm just going to kind of dive in. This is an overview of, of the, the goal and our action steps. So as I said, our goal one was focused on integrating social emotional learning throughout the school day. We had four action steps in that strategic, I mean, that, you know, school improvement plan. One was our paired lessons and our bullying prevention units and our kindness celebrations. As Dr. Arladi highlighted, our paired lessons are taking place tomorrow where kindergarten is going to be collaborating with grade five, first grade with grade four, and our second graders with the sixth graders. It's lessons they'll come, co-teach together around kindness, friendship, and anti-bullying. So that's happening, that's been happening for the years of this plan, but it's also being completed for this year tomorrow. Our second action step was around a parent night focused for social emotional learning and curriculum. And throughout kind of the process of this plan, that, that action step was, was changed a little bit last year with the previous principal. And that was changed to having parent coffee hours with the principal around social emotional items. And so four parent meetings were completed throughout the school year last year. One was on school anxiety and family separation. With the little ones, that can be really tough in the mornings sometimes. The, the second parent coffee hour was around transportation and the safety of transportation coming to school. The third one was on parent-teacher conferences and questions you could ask your, your teachers about social emotional learning in the classroom. And the fourth one was revolved around the summer slide and how to engage students in social emotional growth during the summer months. So those took place last year. Also, part of that plan was doing learning walks and reflection discussions. We used an equity walkthrough tool that we used. The equity walkthrough tool really focused on relationships, rigor, effort. You know, and we, as, as an admin team last year and as, you know, lead teacher team, we focused on student engagement, ensuring student voice as well as relationship building within the classroom. And then our all-school meetings, our monthly all-school meetings that were involved in our kindness initiative last year and our friend, and our friendship initiative, or kindness two years ago and our friendship initiative last year. This year, as Dr. Arladi said, we, we've rolled out What's the Buzz? Be respectful, be responsible. I love that kids are going home talking about it. It, it's been a successful rollout. We didn't start as a whole group meeting. We started in the, at the classroom level with teachers and students at an individual level. And, and then our school monthly meetings will continue. They won't necessarily be involved in just What's the Buzz, but more of some of those important events that are taking place. In November, we're going to have our gratitude assembly where we talk about friendship and what we're thankful for. So those assemblies will continue throughout the year as well. Our goal two was our being green goal. It was really just trying to integrate how we can be more green and environmentally responsible at HOD. This was near and dear to a previous principal, and it was put into the plan years ago, and we, we've held on to it. It's a go, we had our Go Green lessons that were incorporated in our action plan. Those were lessons that were around Earth Week and ways to reduce, reuse, and recycle. And the, the students all did a different type of lesson depending on the grade level during Earth Week. We also have our Earth Day activities, which are our school-wide assemblies. Johnny the K comes every year. He's been coming to HOD as a singer that talks about how to keep our environmentally responsible and respectful. He wears really cool hats and is very engaging for the kiddos. And that usually takes place right around Earth Day. And we'll also be bringing back our Earth Day Assembly in Kunde Forest this year, which was voted on for staff to return. So we're going to continue that initiative in tradition as well. And then our third action step for this goal in particular was just expanding different access points as being green in the building. Right now, we're working on visuals and bulletin boards for the cafeteria for, so students can have more visuals on how to reuse and recycle in the cafeteria. We also, last year, sent home our kind of family packet of, over April vacation of ways to kind of get out into the, into nature and, and celebrate ways to be green at home with, with their families as well. Our goal three is around the ELA implementation and our rollout of the new curriculum. We're in year two. And, and those action steps were really to revolve around professional development and training for the staff. Again, some of the walkthroughs, having staff really collaborate with each other, do some buddy lessons where an older grade will join a younger grade and support each other in co-planning and in staff and peer observations. So giving, giving staff, so those are also in progress. And then our data meetings and MTSS process to help support tier one and tier two students in the classroom. And we're continuing, those are ongoing as well around, you know, our MTSS process, our, our NEST process, data meetings and curriculum meetings to ensure that we are meeting kids and ensuring growth in all the, all of our young learners. And then our goal four was around community and communication. This really was, was a drive through our school council and to, to add this in. And so our action steps were around communication and making sure that expectations were, around communication were defined and clarified for staff and making sure that they were consistent across grade levels. Our monthly newsletters, so the principal newsletters that go out the first of, the first Wednesday of the month, and then the Wednesday's words goes out the second Wednesday of the month. That's new, that was new to HOD when this plan was developed. And then I send out a family buzz for the HOD staff members weekly on Sunday night. So that communication was also added. And then our outreach, our community resource fair that we've added. It's our second year we had at Open House, and it's been a huge success. We've had CPAC and PTO have tables, Cub Scouts, soccer programs, basketball programs, police and fire. Our specialists also set up tables during Open House to show some of our new curriculum that we are enrolling. Our math and literacy specialists were there, as well as our PE and wellness teachers set up a table in our music and arts so that, you know, those aren't always highlighted at Open House. So it was really nice to see them right in the middle of our community fair at Open House. And it's been, that's been a success and a tradition we can, we hope to continue at HOD. And, you know, so I just wanted to thank you for welcoming me today. I am happy to, to answer any questions you have about the, the plan or, or anything that's taking place at HOD. We're excited, our school committee, I mean, our school council is super excited to get started on a new plan. Our, we've already been discussing it and brainstorming some ideas of ways we can align to the district goals. Any questions?
Thank you. And as Kristin said, under the state statutes, the, the school council is required to develop this plan and present to the school committee for approval. But in the interim, in the life cycle of this plan, there were three separate principals that, that were carrying it out. So this is a plan that's been inherited by Kristin. It was, it was actually developed and written by Ms. Balfour. So each principal has made it their own. But it, just so you know, there's a new, new members on the school council and new administrators that have been leading those initiatives. So it looked a little different each year.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. And then next we have Lisa Altamhickey, who will present an update on the Freeman Kennedy School Improvement Plan. And again, both of these plans were three-year plans. We are in the last year of implementation. So later this spring, probably in June, the principals will be coming to present a new proposed school improvement plan with their new councils. So turn it to you, Lisa.
Hello. Thanks for having me. So I'm just going to do an overview of the FK School Improvement Plan. First, I'd like to just thank all the school council members. There have been various different school council members through the years. So I think it's always important that we have teacher reps, we have parent reps, and we have school community reps. So Samantha Moore, the grade five teacher, and Messia Fons were on the 2324 Committee. Mrs. Sarah Nichols, a parent, and Matthew Bullock was another parent on that school council. And 2425, I had Carrie McSweeney, a sped teacher, Tom Cavanagh, a grade five teacher, Janet Turner, a community member, Megan Graham, a parent, and Thais Hickman, a parent. And this year, and they literally just started. So Marissa Harmon, Amy Camo, Megan Graham, a parent, and Janet Turner, a community member. So I just wanted to make sure to recognize them because they are part of, you know, the school council. The purpose is to share the progress on the Freeman Kennedy School Goals. I'm going to highlight basically how our district initiatives align with the school improvement goals. And the overarching goals that we really focused on here is curriculum, diversity, equity, inclusion, social emotional learning, and strengthening relationships. So the first overarching goal was curriculum in that during the 23 to 26 school years, we would support the adoption and implementation of a high-quality research-based literacy curriculum. So our first action step was to support the implementation of our new ELA program. I can say that we have successfully implemented basically our new ELA curriculum in grades three, four, and five, that is into literacy. And in grades, I mean, no, three, four, and five, it's in to literacy. In grade six, it's into reading. I think one of the big things basically is, is that we had an ELA committee to kind of support that. We also had great literacy coaches. And our literacy coaches really focused basically on our first year of implementation in regards to actually modeling and co-teaching different parts of this ELA curriculum. Specifically, they're broken down into modules. And within the modules, there's key components that our coaches actually went in and modeled for their teachers. So some of those were vocabulary routines, foundational skills, which actually align with phonemic awareness, grammar, and book clubs. So I can say that we are highly in progress. We are in year two of that, and everyone's doing a really great job with that. One of the other things that we really wanted to do is, is to make sure basically our literacy and math blocks were aligned basically with new curriculum. So when you're looking at adoption of new curriculum, you want to make sure that, you know, your time on learning is matching all the components of each of the programs. So we were able to actually make changes into this past year's schedule, which is, which is in progress for ELA. Right now, we're gathering data based on a new implementation of Amplify of, you know what, I'm guessing right now from what I'm hearing that we're going to need some more time basically in the math. But that is all working well. One of the other things that happened even prior to us adopting our new ELA program was we really wanted to provide some rich professional development, you know, around the science of reading approach. And we did that prior to the adoption of our literacy program. And there was a lot of professional development that happened in that year. So teachers really have a solid background, you know, of the science of reading. So we are in good shape there. This is another curriculum area that continues. One of the things that was really big a few years ago was the new dyslexia law that went into place. And I think that was in 2023. And as a school district, we had to adopt a universal screener to make sure that we were, you know, measuring students' reading, you know, from kindergarten all the way through grade six. So we adopted a new tool, which is called Akadience, which I'm sure a lot of you are very familiar with. We do a lot of communication about that. But there was a lot of training that had to happen behind the scenes, you know, with our staff in order to learn how to administer a tool, interpret the data. And on top of that, you're having data that you really want to make sure basically now students that need support in certain areas that we've identified is progress monitoring. So you have to actually, we did a lot of work that actually connects to what Kristin was talking about too, about MTSS and tiered supports intervention. Because when you're providing that tiered support intervention, that tier two has to happen in the classroom with the classroom teacher. But on top of that, you have to make sure that you're progress monitoring what the students are doing because you want to make sure, you know what, that the intervention that you're providing with the students are making progress on as well. And there's multiple different components. When you're looking at that Akadience screening tool, that you're looking at fluency, you're looking at accuracy, are you looking at a total reading composite score, things of that nature. So we are doing super well with basically that Akadience tool. Like, we are in year three, and I was just looking at kind of the progress that our students have made, but what our teachers have been able to do now in regards to that. So I think that's awesome. And there was a lot of support also between our reading coaches actually supporting that. Like Kristin talked about, you know, we actually did have a MTSS committee, so a multi-tiered systems of support, who really actually looked at, you know, providing resources for teachers and where teachers could go, you know, what, if they needed to provide tiered supports interventions in any content area. So it could be social emotional learning, it could be math, it could be reading. A teacher website was pervaded on the teacher start page that is full of resources in regards to teachers being able to access that. So that has been completed. There was an overview of the NEST process underneath the tier of MTSS, which is basically our Norfolk Educational Support Team. And that's comprised of all staff members, you know, what? It's a team of staff members that meet if there is a concern about a student, right? So if there's a concern about a student and a student's not making any progress, right? And they are using progress monitoring tools, they might do a referral to the NEST team. And that, that team is made up of sped teachers, regular teachers, our SEL staff, and administrators. And they actually go to that team to be able to say, this is what I've done this far. I'm looking for this team to provide me some more help on what other interventions I might try. What they did on that team, which I thought was really actually great, was they put basically a number of hours that they had, a teacher had to actually provide intervention for, you know, what? So usually you say six to eight weeks. With that six to eight weeks, they're now saying, I want seven or eight hours of intervention. And I want you to come back with the data, you know, what? And then that team's going to evaluate that. And then if that child's making progress because of the tools and interventions that they put in place, then that's great. If they're not, then that team might come back together and say, you know what? What other things can we do? Or maybe it's a special education referral at that point in time. So they did a great job with. point in time. So they did a great job with that. Moving on to the next goal, diversity, equity, and inclusion in social emotional learning. Our SEL, our social emotional learning program continues to actually grow and be enhanced. I mean, one of our overarching goals was to have a strong second, we have a curriculum second step, which really hits the six castles of competencies, which is self-awareness, self-management, decision-making, relationship skills, and social emotional awareness. And those are skills that carry into everyday life. And what we talk about is, these are skills you also need basically when you're adults, right? In everyday job, you're going to use all these different types of skills. So through our second step, lessons, and then on top of that, our Unity Day and our Kindness Weeks, we're constantly improving, you know, and hopefully giving students tools they need and their toolbox to be able to actually use all these schools, tools. There was an anti-bias tool created, and it is used now when we're adopting new curriculum, as well as, you know, teachers can use this resource if they're planning a lesson, or if they're actually looking for resources. This is a tool that we introduced probably three years ago as well. So that is completed and in place. We also have done a great job, I feel, in regards to increasing, you know, school community awareness, basically, and respect for our diverse population, right? So we have disability awareness month that is now in March. We have implemented iCare with Fidelity, I would say, and that's in conjunction with CPAC. Parents are trained to come in to read books. Books are identified for each grade level and questions are developed. CPAC for the last two years has sponsored the Thousand Mile Club, and that's Jennifer Ford and her son Gavin, who has spina bifida, that they actually go and they, our grade five students and our second grade students actually participate in a lesson, right? And what is it like in the life of Gavin, who basically is in a wheelchair, you know, what is his life like? So that's been great. Mr. Tarzik and I, a couple summers ago, took a course basically on restorative justice and community circles. We were able to actually teach that in some courses basically here within our school. And last year, I presented over at KP, you know, how we use restorative community justice circles. And really, it's to work on problem-solving skills, you know. And our goal is, is, you know, to teach kids basically, you know, when there's a conflict or something happens, you know, how do we come together and talk about those things? So we have been doing that a lot, and Adam and I definitely see basically, you know, a lot of progress around that area as well. Continue on diversity, equity, inclusion, social emotional learning. I'll talk a little bit, and a lot of you probably know a lot about, is after COVID, we saw a huge increase of behavior, basically, in, within the schools. And we knew that we needed to make shifts, you know, in regards to our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Support System at Freeman Kennedy. So a committee was formed one summer, and we came up with basically our overarching school-wide expectations of SOAR, safety, ownership, acceptance, and respect. And underneath that goal, one of the things that we really wanted to do was, is we wanted to have common expectations basically within our school to support, you know, all students feeling safe and valued, and especially our teachers as well. So that was completed. Underneath the overarching SOAR expectations is, is that we have expectations outlined in every single, every single environment. So classroom, restroom, buses, hallways, wherever in our environment, there, there are school-wide expectations. That committee created actually lessons and lesson plans that are specifically taught that are actually aligned with our second step curriculum. There's visual posters, you know, throughout our school about our school, you know, expectations. Let's see. We also created a positive reinforcement for students, you know, in regards to our feathers, right? So we really wanted to make sure that students were being recognized individually for actually modeling, you know, anything within SOARs. And we wanted to create a school-wide incentive to make sure basically kids knew, like, you know, hey, how am I going to get to the next level to, to have something be recognized as a school? So we did that successfully. We are in year three of our implementation. We have school spirit days. Individual weekly rewards are done on Fridays here. We've done a lot of school-wide ones as well throughout the school year, whether it be basketball, minute to win it. And we're constantly tweaking and trying to get feedback from students too, through surveys. So there's lots of tweaks happening. I think one of the things that, as a school, that we are super proud of, and I'm just going to click on this very, so we, Adam and I started tracking basically office referrals, basically, when this started. So if you can see here, in 2022, 2023, we had 286 office referrals. The next year, we had 181.
Lisa, can we just clarify? An office referral means that a behavioral issue has happened within the classroom that the teacher has attempted to address and is now referring the student to the office, just to clarify?
And then in 23, 24, we had 181. And then just last year, it went down to 131. So we are continuing to see a decline based on, you know, what we have implemented. And some of this, you know, sometimes I think it's important to know, you know, sometimes some of these are multiple students. So that kind of sometimes inflates basically your data too. So it's important to recognize that too, as well. But it's all going really great. Part of this goal was to create basically logical consequences, basically, that teachers were involved in too. So what is a logical consequence in the classroom? You know, what is something the teacher is doing as a logical consequence versus, you know, at the admin level, what do we think is basically a logical consequence? Adam and I worked with an outside consultant, you know, too, to kind of run by things with him too. So that was really helpful. And let's see. We did a lot of surveys that helped us as well. And one of the other things that last year that we did and this, well, the past two years, but we just got our data back actually over one year, is, is that we started participating in the vocal survey that DESI administers, which is on views of climate and learning. And that is administered at the grade four level and five level after their MCAS. And they really measure basically engagement, safety, and environment. And the data really shows basically that our students actually feel safe at school, that they feel safe in their environment, and they're engaged as well. And we received great data last year. I did present it to the admin team as well in regards to that. Let's see. This is fostering strong relationships between the Norfolk Public Schools, town departments, and local businesses. One of the great things that Rob McFadden has done a great job with is, is actually partnering with, you know, our school-wide Norfolk Garden. And they have basically, you know, learned a lot about gardening. Today, they actually harvested out in the back. We got to see them harvesting. They made, they made their own salads. So a lot of great things happening there. Let's see. Ingrid talked a lot about our peer leadership program and our Falcons to Falcons, who we're very excited about that. So that's ongoing. School-wide community events, we have partnered with PTO for Heritage Night. We have partnered with CPAC for iCare. And we've done a really great job with Unified Champions as well. And the other great thing that we did was, I sent surveys out probably for the last two to three years, actually trying to see if there's any parents that would be interested in actually running courses for our AIM. And we have had parent volunteers teaching robotics, teaching art classes, and they are very excited to be here. In a nutshell. So I just want to, you know, thank our teachers, you know, because they're the people that work really hard behind the scenes to make a lot of these goals actually happen too. So.
I just wanted to say, because there was a lot of excitement in my house, just the fact that you have been involving the kids in surveys and asking them what they think is, has been so impactful. It was like, Mom, they care what I think.
Yeah.
Right? And I think that's just so empowering for, for the ones. So thank you for that.
Yeah. We, we asked them at the beginning of the school year, basically, what they wanted their spirit days to be. So Adam and I, like, let's see, like, we've started it, but what do they want? So you know, and then that's how we kind of form. So it's, it's good feedback for us too, you know. Having them have a voice is really what we want them to be able to do too. So.
Awesome.
Any other questions? Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So as I think you see from the presentations, both of our principals in schools are on track to complete their goals within the timeline and are beginning the process of looking at data and establishing with their school councils, proposed new goals to bring to you at the end of the school year. But incredible accomplishments. I think the PBIS incentive programs at both buildings that they talked about, the Falcons to Falcons and the SOAR program here, and the what was kindness coins into the what's the buzz, have really helped focus on those positive peer relationships, positive behaviors, ways to be good citizens and good members of the school and the community, and are having a definite impact. So the work that happens at HOD is rolling up to the Freeman Kennedy. And as you saw, and I did talk about this when we presented the Equity Report, we've seen a dramatic decrease in the number of behavioral incidents, as well as the closing of the Equity gaps. When we presented this before, we talked about, we were seeing more of our students that have special educational needs represented in the discipline data. Those gaps are starting to close. So these programs are having the desired impact and have had a lot of effort and, and thought behind them in planning. And as both Lisa and Kristen said, they rely on the teachers who are implementing these in the classroom. So great job to both of you. Thank you. All right. Then last on the agenda for me tonight is fundraiser approvals. So you have in your packet requested fundraisers for both the Freeman Kennedy, the HL of Day School, as well as the PTO. We did approve a new fundraiser approval form last year. And so there is one new fundraiser that the PTO is requesting. The other fundraisers are annual fundraisers that have run previously. So I leave it to you. Again, and Lisa, for the FK only, you have the Season of Giving Santa Foundation, November, December, Jump Broke Heart in May 2026, and Artsonia, which is the program that archives visually all of students' artwork, and parents are able to purchase images or stationery or cards, things with student artwork at HL of Day. The Fall Food Drive for the Norfolk Pantry, Coats for Kids and the Hat and Mitten Collection, which happens in November, December. They do another food drive for Norfolk Together for the Food Pantry in February and March. Read Across America is, they do a basket raffle that is run primarily through the Norfolk Teachers Association in March. And then they do a Rally for Cancer opening day at Fenway Park, the Jimmy Fund in Dana Parlor in April, and Jump Broke Heart in May. I've been here for 14 years. I think all of these fundraisers have happened since then. So these are well ingrained in the community and the culture. And then you also see a separate proposal for, for PTO. And highlighted is Fund Pasta, which is a new fundraiser. And they did complete the form, and you'll see the new fundraiser form attached on the back for Fund Pasta. This is a sales of different shaped pasta. You can see the flyer that would go out, similar to what they used to do with Yankee Candle and some of the other cookie dough fundraisers. But all of the information that was requested on the form is completed. You can see the profit margin. You can see, again, how they plan to pursue this by distributing flyers. And parents will be purchasing the goods if they so choose. It does not involve student participation during school hours. Any other questions? They gave some additional information. Looking for discussion, but they are looking for motion to approve the proposed fundraisers.
So moved.
A second. Not many questions. Not many of these.
So everybody knows too, the, the one fundraiser that we do to kind of, through PTO that helps our fifth, sixth grade promotion committee, we did the Candle fundraiser, which was actually a local person that we were actually supporting. And they're no longer doing it anymore. So we had to find something else, and we are trying the pasta.
Or hoping to try the pasta with the school committee, yes. But it does, thank you for pointing that out. It is replacing a similar type of fundraiser that has been run in the past.
90% of my children's diet, I think, is pasta.
Diversify their diet.
It's right, it's right to your house.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye. That's it for us tonight.
Moving on to committee and liaison reports, policy.
Yes. So we met tonight, and it was our first meeting. It's a newly formed policy subcommittee. In short, we had two agenda items, which was to review potential policy changes for, well, actually, the first policy is a net new policy that we don't have in existence, but we currently follow by basic standards in terms of food and nutrition, food and nutrition standards, and meal modifications and parental requests for meal modifications for students who have special dietary needs or restrictions. And so this policy will basically put in writing what we already do as a school district. And we discussed it initially and will be coming to the committee in a, in the next meeting, hopefully, to review, discuss. The second item is potential modifications to public comment, simply to allow a little bit more space and time for members of the community, parents, those who wish to speak during the public comment period at the start of our school committee meetings. So we're looking at potentially increasing times slightly to allow for just a little more space for people to express their views and make them known, make them known to the school committee. And so that, there again, we'll be bringing some proposals to you in the next, in, in an upcoming meeting, likely not the next, but the one after. And those were the two main items that we discussed. Anything else, Lisa or Ingrid? Okay.
I think we also looked at, you know, potential future policies that we in prioritize what we would talk about at the next meeting. So.
Yep.
Budget?
The last time we met was in September.
Yeah.
Like, middle of September. I'm trying to refresh my memory exactly what we, it's been so long.
I can jump in if you want.
Yeah. It was about the additional funding from the state.
Chapter 70.
Yep. Yep. And from chapter 70.
Yeah. So the, the state increased the per pupil allocation for chapter 70 funding, funding after the budget cycle was complete. So that happened over the summer. So the town did receive some additional state funding for chapter 70 over the summer. And we met to talk about how we could potentially leverage that. At the same time, the town lost other sources of municipal funding. One of the most notable is prison mitigation, which they had planned on in order to support the school budget request. However, they, in balancing their budget, there is a surplus of about $40,000 that we have requested be restored at the fall town meeting to the Special Education Stabilization Fund, which we had to pretty much decimate in order to fund rising costs this year. So the town is going to look at making that transfer and request at town meeting to put some money back into that fund so that it remains functional and viable, and it would allow the district to absorb unexpected costs going forward.
We don't have a lot of in budget subcommittees.
When does that process kick off again for budget?
Yeah, that's what.
November meeting. We'll start.
All right. Building Committee.
No new updates, just fingers are crossed.
Still waiting.
Yeah, waiting to hear from Mas.
Fingers, toes.
Not from Mas, from MSA.
Did they give you a timeframe when you should know?
They said, no, November, early December, we should have a decision. So hopefully soon, we will hear something.
Thank you, Philip.
So the KP School Committee meeting for October, there's usually two, one every other week. They only had one this month. It was rescheduled just due to the needs of the agenda, and it unfortunately fell at the same time as my work board meeting in Palo Alto, so I missed it.
And then liaison reports. I'll start with the CPAC because it's listed. I had a call with Kayla Costa, and let me just pull up my notes from that. So their big trunk-or-treat fundraiser is at HOD this Friday. It's one of the greatest events. My kids went to it every year they were at HOD. It's such a, they do such a great job with it, and they're looking forward to it. The weather looks fantastic, so.
Fingers crossed.
So that is coming up. They're also putting on a free parent art therapy workshop on November 20th, and they'll be sending out information on that. They're looking forward to start the iCare reading program, which we heard about in the January, February timeframe. And they are also putting together a free workshop, Rethinking Social Development in a Post-Pandemic World, which will be in February. And then as we also heard, Falcons to Falcons is also in full swing and doing really well. And again, they are always looking for volunteers in any capacity. You don't have to serve on the board. They look, they will appreciate if someone wants to volunteer for an event or for an hour. So they're a great organization and are always happy when people reach out to them. That is CPAC. And then Dora is PTO, I believe.
Yes.
Yes. And then any other liaison updates?
Just in regards to the Norfolk Community League, believe it or not, the holidays are coming up really soon. They have a save the date for their annual artisan winter craft festival, which is a town favorite for November 29th, in the morning, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So it's going to be here before everybody knows it. Exciting.
Anyone else? Moving through, moving to the new items, we have school partnership applications from the Lions and NCTV, and from the CPAC. These are all renewals, so I'm not going to read you the full, the full document on what we need to think about. I will just reiterate that the criteria is partnership, a two-way benefit to both parties, working together or separately towards accomplishing a shared goal. The organization's school partner proposal establishes a direct educational benefit to the Norfolk Public Schools, and the organization's purpose is aligned with the Norfolk Public Schools' mission. So the first one is from the Lions, a community-based organization and a 501-3C charity. And some of the things they do in conjunction or for the Norfolk Public Schools are Camp Bourndale Scholarship. They donate a free family pass to the Norfolk Public Library, to the library for children to visit the Children's Museum in Boston. They sponsor the Haunted Train Ride. They provide presents to several Norfolk families in financial need through their Santa Foundation. They put on the Santa Day Parade. They provide four college scholarships to Norfolk students who demonstrate a strong commitment to community service. They have funded scholarships for Norfolk students to participate in summer programs. They donate money in food each year to help struggling families in Norfolk during challenging time through the Food Pantry. They sponsor the Norfolk Community Day. They put on the Young Performers Variety Show, showcasing Norfolk students' talents such as singing, musical instruments, and creative arts. They sponsor Coats for Kids, and a variety of other activities. So they, we would be looking for a motion to approve the Lions renewal application.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is from NCTV. Here with us tonight. They provide training and filming and editing for all ages. The staff covers various school events at the Freeman Kennedy School and the H. All of Day Schools, making them publicly available and archived for posterity. This allows family members worldwide to share in these moments. And they plan to cover events requested by HOD and Freeman Kennedy and record all school committee meetings. They also have a variety of different classes that are held several times a month and are open to all ages. Looking for a motion to approve the renewal application for NCTV.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then the next one is from the CPAC, also a renewal application. I talked a lot about some of those things the CPAC did. They are a great resource for families with children with special needs. They put on the trunk-or-treat. They put on workshops throughout the year. They hold monthly CPAC meetings. They're a resource to families who have questions. They put on parent workshops. They put on iCare. They really work hard to educate all community members. So they would be looking for a motion to approve their renewal application.
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking for a motion to approve those as written?
So moved. Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then our next school committee meeting is, I believe there's no school that day.
I was going to suggest that we look at changing that, because we ended up pushing the October meeting back.
Yeah, it's really soon.
And so it's kind of a quick turnaround for, so I would suggest we move that meeting back. Just to be aware, there is no school on the 11th, and then the 12th is town meeting of November. So we may want to look at the 18th.
Well, that's the same as the virtual listening session.
Yeah, but that's during the day.
No, it's four to seven.
Hold on, I just got to, I signed up to speed.
Oh, it says four to seven.
I have to double check. Yeah, but it would be still before, four to seven would be, it's virtual, so it would be before we would meet.
Well, okay. Do we have to discuss the letter that we're going to submit for that before?
I think the letter is an ongoing process, doesn't need to be done by that date.
Gotcha, it doesn't need to be submitted.
Yeah, I can send you your, our comments, and if you have individual questions or feedback, you can reach out to me before.
I didn't know if we had to discuss.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. We do have our business manager scheduled to present a budget update, and I think we had talked about, I think the November 18th was a possibility for Merriam as well.
Yes, yes, the 10th or the 18th. Yep.
Yep, and I think the 10th, we might have a conflict with parent leaders.
Does that work for people the 18th?
Yes.
I think so.
We could do Monday, we could do Monday, the 10th too, if that.
I can do either.
Yeah, I can do either. Should we?
She, she could do the 10th or the 18th, so.
Whatever you guys want.
Wait, the 10th did.
The 10th is a Monday, but I don't know if it complete Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And then Wednesday is town meeting.
Yeah, then maybe the 18th.
That work? Okay.
So we've landed on what date?
18th.
The 18th.
18, okay.
And we'll reach out to Madora, make sure that works for her. Great.
Hey, looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You have three.
Well, all second to two.
One, two, three, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thanks, everyone.